Good evening. My name is Greg Ferris and President of the Forney ISD Board of Trustees and I hereby call this Forney ISD Board of Trustees meeting to order. It's now 6:02 PM and certify that the quorum which is present at that meeting has been posted in the time and manner required by the law. Next item of our agenda is closed session. Three A is continuing consultation with attorney. B is deliberate regarding potential sale or lease of property. Three C is deliberate regarding the employment of professional contract personnel. Three D is consult with legal counsel regarding request of sanctions to educator certification. E is team of eight training. F is deliberate regarding discipline of student. And G is safety and security intruder audit. It will now be 6:03 and will be dismissed into closed session under Texas government codes 551071, 551072, 551074, 551076, 551082, 5510821, 551089, and 551129. No voting will take place in the closed session and no open session items will be considered in this meeting. Thank you. We're now adjourned. Good evening and welcome you all here tonight. It is now 7:01 and we'll reconvene from our first meeting back into our regular session now. But first of all, I'd like to recognize Ramona Johnson. She attends the Fine Arts Academy at Blackburn Elementary and she was providing our piano music force tonight. So give her another hand. So we will call that first meeting closed at 7:02 PM and now we will reconvene into our next open session. I am Greg Ferris, President of the Forney ISD Board of Trustees and I hereby call this Board of Trustees meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Although the meetings are open to the public, time for the public to address the board are listed on the agenda. So our recognition and our introductions tonight also will start with our invocation. Tonight, we'd like to ask Bishop Justice Weiss, the Church of Latter Day Saints, to come to the microphone and lead us in our invocation. Would you please rise?
Will you please pray with me? Our dear Father in heaven, we give thee thanks this beautiful evening. Grateful for this opportunity we have to come together as a community and celebrate the students of this wonderful school district. Father, we ask a special blessing to be upon them, our children, our students, the families of this community, the administrators, the principal, the staff, all those who help our children. Please bless them that they may teach correct principles. Please bless them that they may have a bright countenance about them, that our children may trust them and learn more of the things that are joyful unto thee. Father, we pray that this evening, as matters are discussed, that this board will counsel together in the best interest of our community. Father, please be with them and we are so grateful for them, for their dedication to this school district, to our community. Father, we are mindful of those who are struggling and who are in need. We ask thee to please help us to reach out and to show love and concern and help them to be lifted. Father, we pray now that as we begin this meeting, that we may be joyful, as we celebrate the successes of this school district, that we may be mindful of the challenges that are before us and that we can work together and be one in unity as a strong Forney ISD community. And for these favors and blessings, we pray in the sacred name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Have you seated? As you look around, we have a full room tonight, all here to recognize some students. And we'll start with our Students of the Month. At this time, I'd like to ask Stacy Wetzel from Jackson Middle School to come to the microphone, introduce her Student of the Month, and then also Karen Howard, Principal Henderson, will introduce her Student of the Month. So ladies.
Good evening, Board and community. Tonight, I want to recognize Ms. Callie Paulino. Callie is an outstanding student whose achievements surpass all others. She is an anchor in our campus. She is an amazing thespian, dancer, singer, and she consistently captivates her audiences in the theater. Whether she is taking center stage or supporting her fellow cast members, she leads with passion, dedication, and grace. Beyond all of those artistic achievements, Callie is known for her positive attitude and infectious smile, if you can't tell. Uplifting all of those around her, supporting and collaborating with her peers, her commitment to excellence, and her joyful spirit make her not only a star on stage, but also in the classroom. Please join us in congratulating Ms. Callie Paulino, a shining example of academic achievement on our campus.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Terry, and guests. It is my honor to recognize Blaine Teszgabber, a fourth grader at Henderson, as our Student of the Month. Blaine is the daughter of Hewitt and Hob Tob and Dad is here with her tonight. While there are many wonderful things I could share about Blaine, I'd like to highlight a few special reasons why she was selected for this recognition. Recently, Blaine was featured in our campus newsletter as September's Kid of Character for her remarkable empathy and her support for others. Her teacher shared, "Blaine goes the extra mile to help others and is very attentive to their needs. She is always willing to support others and let them know that she is there for them." Her homeroom teacher added, "She's such a joy to have in class. She goes above and beyond in her classwork and is very creative. Blaine is so compassionate towards others and makes everyone feel included." Her reading teacher also shared with us that Blaine is not only a leader of the classroom, but our school too. She exemplifies what it truly means to be a Henderson Hawk when she walks in the door each and every day. Her positivity and work ethic inspire those around her to do their very best. Outside the classroom, Blaine is excited to start gymnastics soon and enjoys spending time with her family and playing with her cat, Otis. She shared with me earlier today that she wants to become a veterinarian. So as you can see, Blaine's thoughtful and compassionate nature truly leaves a lasting impact on our school community. Way to go, Blaine. You are a shining example of kindness in action and we are so proud to honor you as the Henderson Student of the Month.
Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag.
We're going to move on with some more recognitions. At this time, I'd like to ask Robin Pierce to please step to the microphone for some student recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, and Board. The first recognition I would like to recognize is our National Recognized Awards for College Boards' National Recognition. The College Board's National Recognition Program celebrates the outstanding academic achievements of students from underrepresented communities, rural areas, and first-generation college backgrounds. To qualify, students must meet the following criteria. Maintain a 3.5 or higher GPA. Earn a PSAT score within the top 10% of all test takers in their state. Or earn a score of three or higher on two or more AP exams. And attend a rural or small-town school or have parents or grandparents who have not completed a higher education degree. These awards honor students who demonstrate exceptional academic abilities who may otherwise be overlooked in the college recruitment process. This recognition not only benefits students, but also supports colleges and universities' commitment to recruiting diverse and high-achieving scholars. We would like to congratulate the following students from Forney and North Forney on earning this distinguished honor.
Thank you all. Did you have an AP line also? Think you could stay for another picture. Yeah. Yeah, there's AP group over here. If you had an AP certificate, stay in here for the picture.
Yes. So we'll add some additional students here. So the next award we'll be honoring tonight is the AP Scholar Award. Each fall, the AP program recognizes students who have demonstrated exceptional college-level achievement through their performance on multiple AP exams. There are three levels of recognition up here. So we have AP Scholars are students who score three or higher on three or more AP exams. We have AP Scholars with Honors, which are students who earn an average score of 3.25 on all AP exams and score three or higher on four or more. Then we have AP Scholars with Distinction, and these are students who achieve an average score of 3.5 on every AP exam, as well as three or higher on five or more exams. This recognition places recipients among the top 10% of AP students worldwide. Congratulations to our Forney and North Forney students for this amazing accomplishment.
Just come on, come on. I remember this group used to not be this large, so this is great. So give them a big hand. Okay, Mrs. Pierce, the next group?
The next group? We have our final National Merit Commended Scholar. So if this one student will stay up here, we want to congratulate Vance Waldron on being named a National Merit Commended Scholar. This prestigious recognition honors exceptional academic performance and places Vance among the top 2% of seniors nationwide.
We'll move on to our Texas Art Education Association's presentation. Mr. Macat Jones, Director of Visual and Digital Art.
All right. Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Terry, President Ferris, and School Board. Tonight, we are excited to honor six Forney ISD students for our artistic talents. They were selected to be a part of the Texas Art Education Association's 2025 Tech EdCon Tassat Tazbi exhibition. The exhibition showcased pre-K through 12th grade works of art from across the state of Texas. The artworks are displayed in the exhibit hall at the George R. Brown Convention Center in Houston from September 11th through the 14th, 2025. Congratulations to the following students and their teachers. Ava Haynes Petrie, Jones Intermediate School. James Holliday, Smith Intermediate School. Coral Nova Ramos, North Forney High School. Olivia Rolak, North Forney High School. Applause is good. Carly Smith, Timmer Middle School. And Olivia Tanner, Forney High School. Give them all a round of applause.
At this time, Ms. Nikki Edwards, Chief of Secondary Leadership and Learning, to the microphone, please.
Good evening, Dr. Terry and members of the Board. Honored is a national nonprofit organization dedicated to honoring and elevating great teachers nationwide. Every month of the year, at Honored, an exceptional educator in the United States is selected to be the recipient of an Honored National Teaching Award. Each honoree also receives a $5,000 cash reward. Rachel Bowen, Algebra I teacher, as well as volleyball, basketball, and track coach at Warren Middle School, was nominated by her former student, Ethan Hernandez, who wants to share the impact of Coach Bowen's teaching has had on him. At this time, I would like to invite Ethan Hernandez up to the podium to share what he loves about Ms. Bowen.
Good evening, Forney ISD. I'm here today because of my eighth-grade algebra teacher, Coach Bowen, who teaches Algebra I at Warren Middle School. I hope you all learned about the impact she had on me and so many other students. This is a nomination I wrote for honored.org. I hope you enjoy. I've never truly understood math until Coach Bowen's class. Her class is the most rigorous class I've ever taken and I would do it again. She is the only Algebra I teacher at my middle school and there are about 32 kids in her class, and she handles it incredibly. We all turn in homework assignments and corrections every day, leading to a huge stack of papers on her desk. She and a student aide grade, sort, and then pass them all back out within 48 minutes, all while she's also teaching, answering questions, and helping students correct their assignments. Coach Bowen knows exactly what she's talking about. Anytime I ask her a question on assignment, she tells me exactly where I went wrong and how to fix it. Coach Bowen is the strongest believer in hard work. She quotes Kobe Bryant, saying, "I have nothing in common with lazy people who blame others for lack of success. Great things come from hard work and perseverance, no excuses." Being in her class taught me this. If I didn't turn in an assignment, she would call me out in class. Some people think this is mean, but I completely agree with it. It taught me incredible work ethic and honesty. She put me in a high-stress environment and taught me to succeed. I continue to use this skill every single day and I won't stop using it. I couldn't have learned it better from anyone else. I saw students go from not turning in any of their work to getting 100s. That is a common theme I saw with so many other students. The amount of attitude people would give to her, and she wouldn't give up. Those students who never wanted to do anything started doing the work. It was almost like magic. My friends who would tell me all the time, "I'm not a math person," and would get 70s to 80s, ended off the year with 100s. A few years ago, everyone that took Coach Bowen's class all received masters on their STAR tests. Thanks to Coach Bowen's dedication to her class, she goes above and beyond making sure every student masters the concept she's teaching. She knows how each student learns and is more than willing to reteach each concept until they master it. And if something isn't clicking, she asks them to come to tutorials. She's there every single morning to help us. Her dedication to our learning is outstanding. She even would help us outside of class. If we had a question on assignment at home, we could message her on remind. I never waited more than 45 minutes for her to respond. She works with us in and out of the class to make sure we mastered a subject. At the end of the year, we took a math test. She boosted my score from 140 to a 2... Sorry, a 240 to a 280, and a jump like this is absolutely incredible. I was shocked. I didn't know how I accomplished this and I wasn't alone. So many other students saw huge increases in their scores. All the late nights and all the tutorials were so worth it. Everything she made me do was worth it. She never did anything just to make you do it. She has a reason behind everything. Seeing my score made me realize that. Coach Bowen is an outstanding teacher. She runs her classroom like no other. She pushes students to new levels, and not only did she teach me math, but so many other valuable lessons. Being in her classroom is another experience and one I will never forget. I will never forget the standards she also held me to and so many other students. Thank you, Coach Bowen, for being my Algebra I teacher.
recognitions.
We are here tonight to observe National Principals Month this October by honoring the incredible leaders at the heart of our schools. Our principals are the chief culture officers, instructional experts, and tireless advocates for every single one of our students. We want to take a moment to celebrate our leaders who set the standard for excellence.
First, we celebrate our elementary leaders. In this foundational setting, our principals have created a genuinely nurturing and positive environment. Their leadership is defined by their commitment to our Forney ISD values, early literacy and math skills, future-ready development, and family and student engagement. Thank you for the heart that you pour into giving our youngest learners the best possible start. We appreciate your unwavering optimism. At this time, please help me recognize our elementary principals. Beth Dalton, Ashley Tony, you can come on up there. Neely Neggs, Wendy Bailey, Courtney Parker, Christie Crabtree, Jennifer Gillespie, Karen Howard, Carissa Perry, Rodrigo Ichveria, Ashley Rideout, and Mary Bell Sanchez.
Next, we recognize our leaders of secondary education. Oh, sorry. Okay. Next, we recognize our leaders of secondary education. Leading our intermediate, middle, and high schools requires a unique blend of vision and strategic thinking to navigate the complex world of preparing young adults. Our principals have been instrumental in building and nurturing environments where all students holistically excel. They don't just manage buildings, they prepare citizens. Thank you for your steady hand and your powerful commitment to excellence for every single secondary student. At this time, please help me recognize our secondary principals. Bree Malone, Brenda Lopez, Felicia Marshall, Dr. Barbie Knack, Josh Garcia, Stacy Wetzel, Jason Mood, Dr. Rose Thompson, Tally Holt, Dr. Justin James, Dr. Darius Randall, Dr. Jara Patton, Judith Willis, Kristy Mock, Dr. Stephanie Leach, and Sarah Smith. A round of applause to our spectacular secondary.
Ms. Ferris, just wanted to pass on, we have many of our leaders out tonight, either at events, but we also have three that are actually attending a leadership conference down in Austin. And so just want to, once again, thank all of our principals. They have, in my opinion, the toughest job in America, and they come back every day fighting for our kids. And so we appreciate you, we love you, and our community does support everything that you do. I can promise you that. And we just wanted to say thank you for what you do each and every day. So one more round of applause for all of our principals. Yes, thank you, everyone. Thank you all. Appreciate your hard work. Moving on to our next item, Common Sense District Recognition, and from Dr. Stacy Ryan, Executive Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Terry, Mr. Ferris, and School Board. I'm excited to stand up here again and talk about our Common Sense District and what we have achieved over the last several years. I've spoken about this program for multiple years. I've spoken about this program for multiple years, and the reason that we do keep using this is that it has expanded its coverage over the years. It is very engaging and low prep for all of our teams to be able to implement across the district, and it is backed by research and used by multiple districts across the school, across the state and across the U.S. This year, I'm very excited to say this is our eighth year that we are a Common Sense District. All of our media specialists and library pairs are Common Sense certified, as well as all of our campuses. So, I'd like to give a very special welcome and thanks to our media specialists and our library team, as well as our coordinator, Jennifer Gomez, who has helped us maintain this Common Sense District. Thank you.
That concludes our recognitions. We'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you. We'll call our meeting back to order and pick up with reports. Item number six. The next reports only require no action from the board. Six A is our master planning update, Ms. Kim Morzak and guests.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. It's just going to be me tonight. It's a pretty easy master planning update. So, we have the three projects that we're currently working on. The first one is New Elementary School 12. It's coming along really well. If you've not driven out there, you can start seeing that there's a school. So, they've started the ICF in 1A, which is the addition where the patio goes. They've started the foundation pour in one. The deck and slab work's going on. It's looking great on schedule. Getting the fire lane and parking lots poured. Perfect out there. So, stop by and see it. The new Forney transportation facility doesn't look as cool, because it's just a bunch of dirt, but they have started with all of the parking lots, and there's a lot of parking there because it's for transportation, so all the bus parking. So, most of that's done. They have the water line, storm drain, and gas line almost completed. So, on schedule there as well, and going in the right direction. And then the last one is the Gail Wilson Extension. That's going from the second roundabout there in front of Wilson Elementary out to 740. And the paving is done. The water tie-in is in progress. And then, right now, they're working on the approach, which is acceleration, deceleration, turn-in lanes there. That will be an asphalt connection. There's some utility poles there we're still waiting on, and some easement work with textite that we're still trying to get finalized, but that's coming along really nicely as well, and you can see the whole road, kind of how it winds through there. So, that is the master planning update.
Thank you, Ms. Morzak. Moving on to item B, Summary Finance Update. Mr. John Chase, Associate Superintendent of Business and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As the board's aware, this is the time of the year that we get our final summaries of finance report, which is basically an update on what the district is entitled to receive in the way of state foundation school program revenues. They have all of our information with ADA, our tax collections, and so forth. They can plug in the formula, and we get the final numbers from them. And also, as the board is aware, on our maintenance and operations side of the budget, it's not, you know, extra tax collections doesn't necessarily generate more funding. It's always based on funding per student. So, no matter what your student count, the total dollar amount for those students is really what drives the formula. If we get more tax collections, we get less in state aid and so forth. So, just as we finalize this, the two columns that you'll see in those excerpts, the report that I put in your board book, you have an LPE column, again, it's a legislative planning estimate. That's the money they actually sent us by August 31st of this current school year. That was the final payment for the last school year. And then the NF or the near-final column. And so, what that shows is they paid us based on having eighteen thousand students. We actually ended up with just right at seventeen thousand students. And so, that translates into a hundred and twenty-point-one million dollars is what we got for foundation school program and available school fund. And then, we got another five-point-nine million dollars to help us make our bond payments in our INS fund. And so, in the last page of the report, in row seven, that basically is telling us that they paid us a hundred and twenty-two-point-two million. We were entitled to a hundred and twenty-point-one, so we were overpaid two-point-one million dollars. And so, just as a final summary of that, we don't budget. Didn't pick that up as revenue in our final audit that we'll have presented tonight. That's actually recognized as a liability in our balance sheet, so it's not reported as revenue. We're not spending that money or anything like that. So, just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that one. But if there's any questions about the summaries of finance report that you'd like to discuss, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Moving on to item C is a Notice of Intruder Detection, and there's no findings this month to report on that item. Moving on to item number seven, Public Forum. In the public forum, the board will hear comments from the audience only during this public forum portion of the meeting. Individuals wishing to speak must have added their name and topic and signed up prior to the start of the board meeting. Per legal counsel, the board will allot six minutes of tonight's public comments portion of the meeting. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. The board requests that comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, be courteous and respectful. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, a decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through their appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. Speakers who provide details about a specific complaint will be stopped and be referred to the district administration for information about the grievance process where they can continue. The board may not respond to any comments made or questions asked during the public comment section. This time, we have two speakers tonight. The first one we'll call to the microphone is Clarissa Raban. The clock will begin as you start talking.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Clarissa Raban. I'd like to address the board, superintendent, and community members. I come today not as an adversary, but as a voice for the families and the children of Forney, children who are being failed by the very system and trust her with their safety, dignity, and education. You're elected and appointed to protect, lead, and act in the best interests of the students and families in this district, and that duty does not end when the last bell rings, nor when the cameras conveniently malfunction, nor when the truth becomes inconvenient. The reality on the ground is that, across this district, parents are reporting heartbreaking incidents, children being kicked, shoved, slapped, having their hair pulled, day after day, often in full view of cameras, teachers, and other students. These aren't isolated incidents. These are not kids being kids. These are patterns of violence and intimidation that leave children terrified to attend school, traumatized in classrooms, and humiliated in hallways. And yet, the district's response is often to downplay, delay, and deflect. Parents are told video footage is unavailable due to technology issues, or that viewing evidence would be a FERPA violation. And when those excuses no longer hold, the district conveniently sends requests to the Attorney General's office, not to seek justice, but to prolong the process and prevent parents from effectively advocating for their children. And all of this leads to the failure of due process and fairness. When students who are bullied and finally reach their breaking point, students who dare to defend themselves when no adult steps in, are being labeled under the district's blanket policy as engaging in mutual combat. Calling a child's desperate act of self-defense mutual combat is not justice. It's a gross violation of due process and a betrayal of our duty to protect victims. When the aggressor and the victim receive identical or harsher punishments, we're not teaching accountability. We're teaching hopelessness. We're teaching children that their safety doesn't matter as the district's desire to keep its discipline numbers meet. And let's address the weaponization of policy and buzzwords. We're now witnessing the district's selective and inconsistent application of Texas House Bill 6, which went into effect on September 1st. The vaguely-written bill is being used as a shield, a buzzword-laden justification, to discipline students harshly, especially those with disabilities without due regard for the context of their behavior or their IEP and 504 protections under federal law. While administrators invoke words like "safety," "accountability," and "order," but ignore the disability-related manifestations of behavior, that's not leadership. It's discrimination. The law may be vague, but your obligations under IDEA, Section 504 in ADA, are not. The hypocrisy of the Forney family motto is sometimes unbelievable, but becoming more common every day. When you use the phrase "Forney family," what does it mean? Because in a true family, no one hides evidence, no one silences cries for help, and no one punishes the wounded while protecting the aggressors. If Forney family is to be more than a PR slogan, then it's time to start acting like one, with transparency, accountability, and courage to stand up for children who can't stand up for themselves. So, tonight, we have a call to action, and we ask this board to publicly reaffirm your commitment to protecting students from bullying and violence, to end the misuse of FERPA and technology issues as shields to block parent evidence access. We ask you to revise the mutual combat policy to protect the rights of victims acting in self-defense and to mandate disability rights training for all staff, to include your substitutes. Establish transparent timelines for responding to parent complaints and footage requests. In closing, ladies and gentlemen, every child who walks into a Forney ISD school deserves to feel safe, physically and emotionally. Every parent deserves to know their child's safety will be protected. Every board member here has the power to change the narrative, to make Forney family a promise kept, not a phrase exploited. Our children are watching. History will remember what you choose to do or what you choose not to do when it mattered most. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker, Ms. Lesby, Leslie Kavos. Thank you. You can begin. The clock will begin when you start speaking.
Good evening, board members. My name is Leslie Klatos, and I am here today as the president of the Forney FFA chapter. I am here to share some information about our FFA chapter and how this amazing organization impacts students like myself and my peers. In the United States today, only 1.6% of the population is involved in production agriculture. Forney serves as a great example of a town that has significant agricultural roots, but is gradually becoming more urbanized, leading to a decrease in its agricultural impact. This is why it's important to support our Forney FFA chapters. By doing so, we can continue to share the importance of agriculture and provide students with opportunities to explore and understand its importance for everyone. Supporting our FFA chapters helps us educate younger generations, allowing them to have the valuable experiences that I and past members have all enjoyed. For many of us, FFA was the reason we discovered our passion for agriculture. Many FFA members come from non-agricultural backgrounds, which can make it challenging for them to experience activities like tractor restoration, insect identification, milk judging, and raising livestock, among other opportunities and activities that FFA provides. However, thanks to FFA, many other members and I have the chance to experience and participate in these unique activities and contests to showcase our knowledge and explore new skills. Without FFA, I believe my future would look very different, and I believe many other FFA members would agree that this organization has had the same effect on them. Ever since I joined FFA, I have known that my passion lies in the agricultural field, which is my dream. I probably would have never discovered this passion if it weren't for all the opportunities that FFA has provided me. That's why it's important for me to share the importance of FFA, so many more students can find their passion and experience all the amazing opportunities that FFA offers. Thank you, board members, for your time. If you have any questions about our organization, its mission, or the benefit it provides to students, I'd be happy to answer them and share more information with all of you. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Our next agenda, item number eight tonight is a consent agenda. Consent Agenda 8A is approved minutes from the September 8th regular board meeting. 8B is approved, the budget amendment. 8C is approved, workers' compensation pool insurance. 8D is approved, purchase of body cams and tasers. 8E, approve innovative course for 2526, and 8F, approve construction bids. The board may take action on these separately or collectively. Do I have a motion from the board? Do I have a second? Miss Bateman, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Item number nine, consideration and possible approval of naming of Elementary Number 12. Ms. Kristin Saskel, Chief of Communications.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Our facilities naming committee that you convened at the last board meeting has reviewed community nominations and actually followed the guidelines in our CW local policy. So, they use those guidelines, which are listed above, the four different ones that a building could be named after. So, after reviewing those community nominations, making sure they follow the guidelines, the facility naming committee would like to recommend that Elementary Number 12 be named Jim and Linda Jacobs Elementary.
Thank you, Ms. Saskel. Any questions from the board? Do I have a recommendation from the board?
I make a motion that the board approve Elementary Number 12 to be named Jim and Linda Jacobs Elementary as presented.
I have a recommendation and a motion from Dr. Eda Moudia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Dobbs, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. Well, thank you so much. Moving on to item number 10, Mr. John Chase, consideration and possible approval of the annual audit.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Tonight, we will have our audit results presented to you by a representative from Weaver and Tidwell, the audit firm that we use for our audit work. This is the fourth year that they've worked on our audit. They start their field work process in May, and then they conclude it in September and issue the financial report, which you received in your board packet this past week. So, tonight, we have Claire Wooton here. She is the senior auditor on the engagement, and she's going to talk to you about the results of the audit.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you so much for having me out tonight. My name is Claire Wooton, and I am Audit Director with Weaver, and we finished our audit of the financial statements, and I would like to present those results to you today. We'll go through a quick introduction of the team, the audit process, results of the audit, our required communications, some quick financial highlights, and then can discuss any questions. So, our audit leadership, Sarah Dempsey, she has stepped into more of the engagement quality review, and I have stepped into more of the audit direction, so I was promoted to Audit Director. And then, below me, I have Kyra Petway and Casey Cusalita, who both were out here day-to-day, and I came out a few days a week to help guide the audit. So, our audit process is really a year-long approach where we think through the initial audit planning stage. We think through what items have been passed by the legislature, what items have been going on with your school district throughout the year by reviewing board minutes. And then, we perform our interim field work. We came out in June this year. We looked through the district's internal controls. We selected a number of selections where we tested those controls a certain number of times for both the payroll process and the cash disbursement process. We tested your federal programs and made sure those were operating as the federals and state required. And then, we came out in the last week of August through September to go through the final numbers. Once those financial statements of the school district were ready to be audited, we came out and audited those numbers. And then, I'm here tonight to present those results. So, our audit was performed in accordance with Generally Accepted Auditing Standards, or GAS, as well as Generally Accepted Government Auditing Standards, or GAGAS. And then, along also with the And so that Uniform Guidance and GAGAS really cover that single audit piece that covers your federal financial assistance. And then also, we perform the audit in accordance with a risk-based approach. So we're looking at really those highest-risk areas, where we look at scopes, and then we place those highest-risk areas on just the nature of improper revenue recognition, knowing that that is where your financial statements could be materially misstated. So foundation aid, because just like John covered earlier, those require an estimate at the beginning of the school year, based on the number of students and based on the tax collections you will perceive to receive a year away. And so we place a significant risk on that, as well as grants, because there's a number of compliance requirements with those. And then also, the journal entry process. We place a higher risk to make sure there are controls in place, and make sure there are no management override of those internal controls. We performed our interim field work in June. We did our planning and risk assessment procedures, as well as walking through the internal controls over significant accounting cycles, being cash dispersments, cash receipts, including the state and federal receipts, both the state foundation aid, as well as your federal receipts. And then payroll, your budget process, and your month and year-end close process. We also identified your major federal financial assistance programs and tested compliance over those programs. This year, we identified child nutrition as the program that we wanted to test. That's based on a formula that the OMB and Uniform Guidance sets out. In testing that program, we hit 56% of your federal financial assistance, which is a pretty good. We're only, as a low-risk auditee, we're only required to get to 20% coverage. So 56% is really good. And then compliance testing. So that is with, under the Public Funds Investment Act, we made sure investing, utilizing the investing approach you all do with pool investments, that that was under district policy, as well as Texas policy. And then we tested internal controls over cash dispersments, payroll, bidding procedures over your large construction projects, and then compliance with state and federal law. Once those numbers were ready to be audited, we came out in September, the very last week of August, completed those single audit testing procedures over those federal programs. We performed capital projects testing, and then tested all of the financial statement line items by using a combination of analytics and vouching material transactions, as well as sampling. And then we also assisted with the preparation of the annual financial report, which you all have in front of you. All right, so the audit results. We have issued an independent auditor's report on the financial statements, so that's our opinion, that's near the front of the report, that is covering our opinion over the financial statements. Towards the back of the report, there are two letters in the compliance section that are the GAGAS letter, so that's your, going over your internal controls. We also were able to issue that letter, and we have given a clean opinion over that, no findings noted. What we have not yet issued is our independent auditor's report over compliance over your major federal programs. The reason we have not is because we audit based on a compliance supplement issued by the OMB, which is required under Uniform Guidance, and the AICPA has not allowed us to issue a report until the final 2025 compliance supplement has been issued. That usually happens, a late issuance in a political year, a presidency year turnover, and then the government shutdown has also pushed it a little bit. So once the AICPA and GAQC of the AICPA have let us issue that opinion, we will finalize those financial statements. But we have finished the testing and noted no findings. So once we are able to issue that opinion, we will, and then John will get it submitted to TEA. But what that looks like to you, the AFR is totally completed. You'll notice draft stamps at the very end, where we couldn't sign the Uniform Guidance letter, otherwise it is fully complete. No other number, no numbers will change in here, it is just us putting a signature on it. But everything else in here is complete. And so similar results here, we have issued our letter of our unmodified opinion over the financial statements, that's under Generally Accepted Auditing Standards. We have also issued our report noting no findings under the government auditing standards. Then what we have not issued yet is our opinion over compliance under the Uniform Guidance, so that our testing is complete, no findings noted, and we cannot issue until we have the final 2025 compliance supplement. Any unusual transaction or the adoption of new accounting principles, this year was the adoption of GASBIE 101, which added a liability for what's called compensated absences. So that is any leave that is accrued by employees, but that leave has not yet been taken, so it has been earned by the employees. They roll over into a new year, and that leave has not been taken, they still have some hours they could take. And so we just, GASBIE 101 required that leave to be calculated into a dollar amount, and put on the financial statements as a liability. Knowing that it will not lead into a cash liability, it will just be when those teachers can use the balances that they have remaining. So that did add a liability, and it did add a change in accounting principle that's identified in the financial statements. But that is what GASBIE 101 is. We noted no fraud or illegal acts when we were auditing the financial statements. We noted no material weaknesses in internal control over financial reporting, or over internal control over compliance, no findings noted there as well. We reviewed any items where management had to express any judgment or accounting estimates, like the state aid calculation, and we noted all estimates were determined to be reasonable and free of management bias. And then we noted no difficulties encountered when we were working with management. John and his team were able to get us all items very quickly for us when we were out here auditing. For the management representation letter, they signed the letter the day we were ready to issue the financial statements, and so they signed that in conjunction with the release of our opinion. And then we're not aware of management going out to another firm for a better opinion. I think we've given a pretty good opinion here, saying there's no findings, so there was no other need to consult any other auditors. And then we're not aware of any independence issues with us as a firm, or us as audit team. And then there were no past adjustments, which means there is nothing in here small enough where we thought, it's so small, we're just going to pass on a journal entry or anything like that, and there are no audit adjustments at all. So the numbers in these financial statements tie exactly back to the number in your all financial statements. There were no changes at all. We audited everything, so we had no changes there. And then there are no other written communications between us and the district that I needed to make you all aware of. So your revenues for your governmental funds between 2025 and 2024 are shown here in a pie graph, so you can see your local, state, and federal programming. Your revenues totaled 301.3 million in fiscal '25, which was an increase of 19.8 million, or 7%, compared to 2024. And that increased in your local source revenue by 5.9 million, primarily due to an increase in property tax revenue, compared also with a 9.5 million decrease in interest income. Your state program revenue increased 13.1 million dollars due to the state aid revenue increasing. And then your federal programs increased just 758,000 due to a few factors. Your child nutrition funding increased, you had a stronger connections program funding that caused a $543,000 increase, and then there was a decrease in Char's funding. And so you can see those trends over time. I like this slide, because it's nice enough to see those changes over time to show what the increases and decreases look like. And then your 2025 expenditures compared to your 2024. The biggest change there is really in that facilities acquisition. That's your capital outlay, what you're spending, when that was really large in 2024, and it's a little bit smaller in 2025, so it really changed that pie graph. But your 2025 expenditures totaled 377 million, which is a decrease of 182 million, or 32%. The largest changes were an increase of 12.4 million in payroll costs due to an 11% increase in employees, as well as your facilities acquisition and construction, that's your capital outlay, decreased 201 million, which there was still quite a bit this year. You totaled 100.4 million in fiscal '25, with continued construction on Jones Intermedia, Warren and Fimmer Middle Schools, Elementary Number 11, North Forni High School expansion, and the new Forni Learning Academy. And there, we can see those changes over time as well. The biggest really being in that facilities acquisition, had a little bit drop this year. And then your fund balance, still is a very healthy fund balance. Your governmental funds reported in 2025 a combined ending fund balance of 200.7 million, broken out as below, in general fund, debt service, capital projects, and then your non-major governmental. And then in the pie graph on the right, it's broken out on how that money sitting in fund balance is classified. So the very tiniest sliver is non-spendable, because it's already been spent either in inventory or prepaid. The next largest, that green category, is restricted, mostly restricted for either the payment of debt, or payment on capital projects. So those are being your debt servicing, your capital projects funds. And then any other funding in committed or assigned, that has been assigned by the board or by management. And then the blue sliver is your unassigned, so that can be spent on anything. And then your fund balances from prior year decreased approximately 43.5 million. There was a 6.6 million increase in debt service fund, and that was due to property tax revenue and issuance of refunding bonds. There was a 65.8 million decrease in capital projects fund, which was the result of continued capital project spending, and then offset also by an additional building bond issuance in 2025. And then lastly, 15.9 million increase in the general fund, which was due to increase in property tax revenue and state aid. And that is all I have prepared for you all tonight. Do you all have any questions over the financial statements?
Thank you so much for that summary. Do I have any questions from the board? I hear none. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your explanation and all your work. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Dr. Cherry, do you have any further comments?
Well, as you saw, that was an unmodified audit. In the school world, that's 100% John Chase, and we just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for the team that you put together, and the work that you guys do, and we appreciate your services. I think this is our fourth year with you, and John just raved about the partnership and the work that you guys do together, and it just seems like the communications in your team that you bring out's done a great job as well. So I want to thank Weaver, and just wanted to recommend the audit tonight to the board for approval. And again, just say thank you for all the work that our, both teams did to get to this point, and this 100, 200-page document that we have to read in our, or I think I heard one board member say, that you needed some good reading in the evening when it's about time for bed, right? Now, we do appreciate our work and the job that they do, and we'd recommend the audit as presented.
I think we get a page, new page for every student. It's getting bigger and bigger every year. So thank you for this report. Board, do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move that we approve the 2025 Annual Financial Report as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Edamudia, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you very much. Mr. Chase, appreciate you and all your team for helping make that go so smoothly. Moving on to item 11 then, Mr. Chase, would you come and speak to us about item 11, Resolution on Nominee Candidates for Election to the Kaufman Central Appraisal District Board of Directors?
As the board may recall, last year, we discussed changes that were to be made on the makeup of the members of the Kaufman County Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. As we noted then, the law changed and it requires a nine-member board. One of the members is the tax assessor, there's five appointed members, and three members that are elected at large now, and that's for counties with over 75,000 in population, which we certainly qualify for. At the time last year, we nominated all five positions, because it was a change in the process. Those positions, they were staggering terms, and so there was, you know, two of those members were actually only had one year in their term, and so they're expiring at the end of, you know, in December. And those two members were Danny Kirby and Bruce Wood. Both members have actually agreed to serve an additional term, which would be a reappointment to a three-year term, should the board choose to do so. You have a resolution tonight in your packet that would do just that, if it's the board's desire to nominate these two individuals again. Now, the process would be all the taxing jurisdictions that are currently nominating, they'll accept nominations, the Sarah Curtis, and then she'll put together a ballot, and then she'll send that ballot with all the nominations included to the taxing jurisdictions that she'll receive sometime in next month, or maybe the end of this month. And then in, sometime shortly between the time we received it in December, the next two board meetings, I think we can go up to two meetings after we've received the ballot, before we actually have to take action on it. But at that point, you will actually cast our votes for who we want to nominate, and then the highest, the person that received the highest number of votes will get reappointed. So that's the process, and again, tonight, we're just asking for nominations. Danny Kirby and Bruce Wood have both, again, said that they would serve again, so if it's your desire to nominate those two individuals, you have a resolution in front of you that would do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Any further comments from Dr. Terry?
No, sir. We would recommend that, did speak to the chief of appraisal, she said they've been two good members, and we would recommend reappointing them as nominees at this time through the resolution.
So the board, you've heard the recommendations, you see the information in your packet. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I make the motion to approve the resolutions to nominate candidates for election to the Kaufman Central Appraisal District Board of Directors as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burkealter?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Next, item number 12, it's closed session, that was covered in the first meeting tonight, the six o'clock hour. Moving on then, item 13, consideration approval of request for sanctions of educator certification to be submitted to the State Board of Education. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move that the board find Gilbert Cipriano and Rolanda Smith have abandoned their employment with the Forni Independent School District without good cause, and direct the administration to take the necessary steps to seek sanctions against their educator certificate.
I have a motion for Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none. Item number 14, consideration and possible approval regarding employment of professional contract personnel. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I make the motion that the board approve the employment of professional contract personnel as discussed in closed session.
I have a motion for Mr. Regan. May I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Edamudia?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Item 15, consideration approval of contract for personal services pursuant to House Bill 3372. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I move to approve the administrative contracts for personal services as discussed in closed session. Finding that the contracts will not harm the district, the arrangements do not present a conflict of interest, and the services will be performed entirely by the administrator's personal time.
Thank you, Ms. Burkealter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Item 16, announcements and upcoming dates. Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Just a few quick updates. We do have a few adjustments to our meeting schedule throughout the rest of the fall. So first off, our November regular meeting, just wanted to point out, it'll be a week later, that'll be November the 10th. We have a special call meeting with some of our attendance modification coming up, and that'll be the Thursday before Thanksgiving break on the 20th. And then also wanted to point out, the December meeting will be backed up to December the 15th. So just note those changes on your calendars, we'll make sure and keep those in your updates as well.
Do I have any further comments or questions from the board? I hear none, we'll call it 818, and we'll be dismissed. Thank you.